Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting for Blue Ridge County. If you can, please rise and say pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Got the agenda review, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
All right, I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. All right, public comment portion of the Blue Ridge County Board meeting allows an opportunity for citizens to address the county board in a public setting. Mr. Roger Beckel?
Close, Bechel. That's close enough.
Has requested time on the agenda to address the county board today. This is a public hearing meeting with a set agenda. Therefore, we ask the public to limit comments to five minutes or less. And I have asked our county administration to keep time and provide you with a one-minute warning. Remember, the county board will not take action on your comments during this period. Mr. Beckel, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Roger Bechel, 308 South AFC Street, formerly 312 South AFC Street, Eagle Lake. So I'm here to discuss snow removal from County State Highway 27 in Eagle Lake within city limits. I'm in city limits on the county, uh, block section. We, uh, we've been there since 1990, my family and I, and we've, we've always removed the snow from the sidewalk in a timely fashion as required by the city ordinance. The older design of the road had about a 10-foot boulevard and a four-foot sidewalk. The new reconstruction in 2021, completed in 2021, reduced the boulevard to about three feet, sidewalk widened to six feet. So our issue becomes how do we remove snow from the sidewalk, hard-packed snow and ice from the sidewalk that's been moved there from the street? And it's, we've been dealing with this for two years now, been working with the county and with the city. We've approached both. We saved ice chunks this last year in a cooler. Some of the ice chunks are about the size of a football. And these are on the sidewalk, mixed in with new snow. The first year, 2021, the first season out, the first snow fallout, we damaged our walk behind a snow blower. It actually picked up ice chunks, got stuck in the impeller, bent the impeller, bent shaft, gearbox, and killed the unit. It was no longer feasible to repair, so we replaced it for over $1,100. This year, same thing happened with a 44-inch snow blower. Ice and chunk, ice chunks and hard-packed snow moved onto the sidewalk. We picked those up and it bent the paddles on the impeller and bent the backing plate. It's another $1,000. Our point being that we cannot keep moving the hard-packed snow and ice. I get home after work, this is frozen on the sidewalk. Our options to get this off are quite limited. We use residential equipment. We started using an ATV, we put a plow on that. We were breaking the mounts on the plow on that as well. We can't get through it. Our neighbor across the street uses his pickup and a, and a snowplow, a pickup and a plow to get through. He can't even get through it. He has to make several passes moving off to the side. So what we're asking, and I did work with Mr. Childress who's here, and he was, he listened and he was trying to be part of a solution. He said, let me talk to the operators, see if they can slow down. That was 100% effective. That did not move the snow and ice onto the sidewalk. It stayed, the boulevard is really short, there's not much of a buffer there, and I'm sure there'd be more expenses incurred by having that process year-long, but it did save us from breaking any more equipment. However, not all the operators slowed down, so we still had the same debris going on the sidewalk. That's when we damaged the 44-inch wide snow blower and hydrostatic tractor this season. So it works if we follow the same process. If it doesn't, then our increase, our expenses keep increasing. Now, this is a 60-year-life road. So if, if I average out $1,000 a year, I'll spend $60,000 just on removing the snow, trying to keep my equipment going. I did resort to a tractor loader last year and this year, which I had to do. I couldn't get through the material. That did not break down, but now we're talking about something that's bigger than residential. It's industrial grade. There are 40-some units along that, that highway. Can we all afford to have industrial-grade equipment to move this stuff off the sidewalk? We can deal with the fresh snow. It's the stuff from the street that's moved from the street onto the sidewalk, but we can't get through. And I'm, I'm hoping you see that it's not reasonable to put that on us as residents to clear this. It's a hardship, a major hardship for the life of the road. So 60 years we'll be dealing with this. A few of us in the neighborhood tried to clear roughly a four-block section. So it starts from down by the post office, down through the double block and the next block yet. So we're clearing about four blocks. So we're trying to help the rest of the residents as well. And some of us are elderly, there are a number of elderly along this whole section's corridor.
One minute remaining.
So we're trying to help. I'm going to ask you to please, if you can, not put the snow from the side, from the street, the snow and ice, onto the sidewalks. That, that helps us keep it clear for safety for everyone else. And I appreciate your time for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments and that we will be talking with our Public Works about that. Thank you. Drainage, great. Morning, Craig.
Good morning. I got two items this morning. First one, regarding a petition for partial abandonment on County Ditch 26. The Blue Ridge County Ditch 26 watershed is more than 1,070 acres in size and is in McPherson and Blue Ridge Townships. County drainage staff received a petition for partial abandonment on February 6th, 2023 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 103 E. Point 836. The Drainage Authority must set a public hearing to consider the petition. The hearing must be endorsed by mail, petitioners, owners of property, and the political subdivisions likely to be affected by the proposed abandonment. At today's meeting, the Blue Ridge County Drainage Authority, we are requesting the Drainage Authority to approve the financing order setting the hearing date for June 20th, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
And second item, we have granted a petition for improvement of County Ditch 56. Blue Ridge County Ditch 56 watershed is more than 5,000, excuse me, 8,500 acres in size and is in Garden City and Lincoln Township. Drainage staff received a petition for improvement on August 22 of 2022. On September 13th, 2022, the Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Brandl, engineer of ISG, as the project engineer. Mr. Brandl was ordered to repair our preliminary survey report. The preliminary survey, it was reported filed with the Blue Ridge County Property and Environmental Resources Department on February 8th, 2023. At today's meeting, the Blue Ridge County Drainage Authority, we are requesting the Drainage Authority to approve the financing order setting the hearing date for June 20th, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, Public Works, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan.
Well, I know that Ryan has been busy not only with upcoming construction, but also with the state transportation bill that's going through because
Yes.
Both myself and Ryan have been contacting our legislators and our senators on, on issues. So I thank you for all the work that you've been doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work as well. Yes, it's been an incredibly busy legislative session. My time with the county is in this position and previously, as well as my, my role with the County Engineers Association as co-chair of the Legislative Committee. I've never seen a session this busy, so it's been a lot of work, but a lot of things are getting pushed through and we're just going to keep our fingers crossed that this transportation bill brings us some additional funding and relief much needed. So we'll jump into our Public Works Agenda Action Items. First item is consideration of bids for State Aid Project 007626019, which is County State Highway 26 reconstruction from Cassaw 57, which is North Riverfront Drive, to Minnesota Highway 22. This includes trail along the south side of the road, urbanization of the existing two-lane rural road to a three-lane urban section with curb and gutter and storm sewer. The engineers' estimate was 3.8 million and our low bidder was Minnesota Paving Materials at $4,517,905.70, which is 18.74% over our engineers' estimate. We analyzed several of the project overrun factors and I will hand out some information for the board to look at on this project. So the first item coming around is the overrun factors. The second item coming around is the project bid abstract. So as we began to break down the project bid abstract to really try to get a better understanding of why, I think one of probably the first things that's important to emphasize with the board is that this project had some complexity with respect to overall project drainage. The existing project had various drainage points distributed throughout the project. One of them ran to the north and we, after we televised and found out that this 24- or 30-inch concrete storm sewer pipe that took about a third or half of the project drainage actually ran underneath the mobile home park and actually ran underneath one of their buildings, got built over the top of it and discharged into this failing, highly eroding ravine. So replacing that pipe would have required going around the building, replacing all of the pavement in the mobile home park that we would disturb with the storm sewer trench, and then effectively putting in a large drop structure and a dissipation point just to discharge a portion of the project drainage. Additionally, other portions of the project drained into ravines that were unstable. And so as we started designing the project initially, I think we spoke months ago about our, our previous discharge point of design was into a ravine between two homes. One of the homes was in probate after the landowners passed. That required significant cut and deforestation of the ravine and trying to stabilize that outfall. And then the water still had to come around several bends of the ravine. We later learned that there were several homes along that stretch that were already having ravine erosion issues. And so we had significant concern about being perceived as adding to those problems. So ultimately, we knew it was going to add a cost to the project, but we decided to carry the 42-inch storm sewer further to the west, to the western portion of the project. So it's pretty rare to have to discharge all of your drainage to one location at the very end of the project. And we were able to dump the water into a location where it, it can be stabilized easily, it can be accessed for maintenance, and we can forego and avoid future ravine repair projects. So we thought that was a pretty important thing when we begin to look at these 50-year life plus of a, of a road. So trying to mitigate future risk incurring costs today. So we, when we look at that, we, we do note that the drainage, which is listed on the precast concrete items, we, we attempted to account for that. However, those items came in considerably higher, as we've discussed previously. The market on precast concrete, large pipes and manholes and things of that nature is fairly volatile still. Just a year ago, it was very difficult to even get manholes and pipes and you just prayed that they show up to your job. We're still having severe delay with box culverts. So if we look at the spreadsheet, the overrun price comparison spreadsheet, you can see that those drainage items came in at about $350,000 over the engineers' estimate. Additionally, the grading items, this is a urban project that's much less efficient than a five-mile-long rural reconstruction project. With that being said, while we tried to account for that, the items still came in, $153,000 over our engineers' estimate. The base items, which is the aggregate base and the grain and the materials, also came in about the same amount higher. And the bituminous pavement, we should have bumped up the prices in our estimate considerably to reflect that urban, less efficient paving as well. Those came in about $182,000. So the total over the engineers' estimate is $841,938.80, as is detailed on the spreadsheet. We did receive five bids. MPM was not the, the sole bidder. And they ranged from 18.7, which was Minnesota Paving Materials at the 4.5 million, to the high bid of Hazleton Construction at 5.22 million, which is 37.3% over our engineers' estimate. So I, given the time of year, I don't know that rebidding it is going to net us lower prices. One additional consideration that I want to bring up and make the board aware of is that W. Lorenz Construction emailed us following bid opening on April 26th claiming to have electronically submitted a bid lower than Minnesota Paving Materials bid. However, it never came through, it never showed up. So we investigated that matter with the bid vault software, the electronic bidding software that we use with their vendor, RT Vision, who we work with quite a bit. They provided an email documenting that, that a bid was indeed submitted by W. Lorenz Construction, but then within about 30 to 45 seconds, it was withdrawn. And the withdrawal process isn't just one accidental click. It actually, and they were able to verify that it came from the same IP address, so it was the same user. It's not just one click and you accidentally undo it. It, it, it brings up a verification page to say, are you sure you want to do this and which, and this is permanent? They provided us the documentation of that process in that email. I'd be more than happy to share with the board if they'd like to see it. But ultimately, the bid was withdrawn. So it was multiple times it was clicked to withdraw the bid. They were claimed, they, they did not acknowledge that, however, that's what the software vendor informed us of. So with that being said, we did share that information and confer with the county attorney's office. Speaking with Pat yesterday, I think based on his recommendation and our discussion, I'm confident that we can move forward to bid award to Minnesota Paving Materials. Do you have to answer any questions on that?
Any questions or somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll move rule Minnesota Paving Materials.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The second action item is consideration of our 2023 CRS bituminous materials bids. This year, we received two bids. We were working through some legalities. I think maybe you recall previously, last year Flint Hills provided a bid, however, we were forced to reject it because they began striking out the language in our proposal and our, our insurance requirements and other things, which, speaking frankly, MinDOT had confirmed what I was very confident in, that we were not going to accept their bid. We tried to work with their project management to work through those and see if we could find changes between the two of us. However, they were not very open with communications, so it was difficult to communicate with them back and forth. So we're still going to continue to try to work with them to get them back into the mix because they view themselves as a vendor, not a contractor. We view it differently when they come on our jobs. They are providing materials and filling that role for the MinDOT spec. So we received two bids this year, Gempro and HG Mikes for the CRS-2 asphalt emulsion. One item to note is we did add the CRS-2 polymer modified emulsion asphalt, which we typically don't utilize. We're going to be utilizing that on our very high-volume roads that we plan to chip seal this year. So that polymer modification just gives it a little bit more durability at a higher price. So if you're looking and see that the CRS-2P emulsified is not on last year, as you are correct. The total bid is $652,850. I would recommend award HG Mikes.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. Thank you.
Project updates, Cassaw 16 from La Sura River to Cassaw 9D. The utility relocations are happening now. We've got all the right-of-way out there. Construction is set to begin Thursday, May 11th with road closure. And the detour will be very similar. It'll be effectively the opposite of what the County Road 1 detour was. So we'll use Cassaw 35 over to Cassaw 1 and then back on 90. So the same loop, just different roads being closed this time. Contractor intends to start at the midpoint of the project and then work their way to the north, and then when that's completed, they'll progress to the south.
It's starting this week or?
Uh, next Thursday, 11th of May. Cassaw 13 from US 169 to Cassaw 1, plans are approved for construction. Right-of-way acquisition is nearing completion. Jack just told me this morning, thinks he's got about two weeks left on it. So we've got that in a very good place. The utility relocations can begin, however, they're not likely to completely happen until late 2023 or early 2024. We've given them directive to begin them, however, we want to ensure that we're not disrupting crop harvests, so a lot of them will likely have to happen late in the fall as we widen right-of-way slightly. Well, as we begin to look at that, I think we're likely to try to bid it this fall or even perhaps late summer. We're going to confer with area contractors to try to determine what timing could net us the best potential pricing. And likely the work would all begin in 2024 because of the utility relocations, et cetera. It would provide the bridge contractor an opportunity if they wanted to start during the winter with bridge removal so that they could be in position to replace the bridge relatively quickly and have that done prior to really the grading kicking off or at least getting it very close. So we want to offer them some flexibility by bidding it early now that we've got it ready to fill. The tree clearing would also have to happen over the course of November 1st through March 31st. Cassaw 26, the project is, we discussed, was bid to start on June 5th and will be completed by late fall, the east portion of the trail. We'll be left out of the 2023 construction until that single parcel of land can be acquired for the trail construction, and that may be in 2024. Cassaw 11 from West County Line to Cassaw 6, the design is at 75%. Our project open house meeting will be scheduled, however, I think we're going to look into most likely June to make sure that planting season come to, come to close so we can get all of those landowners in and speak with them. That project should be pretty straightforward. Cassaw 82 Victory Drive from South Hoffman Road to Fair Street, the design is beginning with some traffic analysis of the main street and Marwood, with Marwood Drive intersections where Victory Bowl is. So we've been looking at some crash data and traffic at those intersections, trying to just discuss access, et cetera. And Cassaw 15 Bridge, replacement still on schedule for bid this early summer. Another update, the city of Eagle Lake was awarded Transportation Alternative Funds in the amount of $475,982 for fiscal year 2027 federal funding, which will cover 80% of the cost to construct a new trail along Cassaw 27 and the sidewalk along 211th Street to provide for greater bike and pedestrian mobility. Again, that covers 80% of the total construction cost. The city and the county have, the county agreed to be a project sponsor, so requiring that we will have to administer the construction contract because of our delegated contract process authority with MinDOT. So we know our small cities can't take in and distribute construction, federal dollars that goes through us. And additionally, we'll be responsible for 50% of the remaining construction cost per our policy. We are looking at also applying for Minnesota Department National Resources local trails grant to assist with the other 20%. So very similar funding cocktail to what we did with the Stolzman Trail in Van Cato, which, which ended up paying for nearly 100% of construction cost and, and engineering costs. So good news for the city of Eagle Lake. Right now, they're proposing that the trail go on the east side of the road, so there will be some work to be done in detail design if we try to figure out just how it fits within the road right-of-way. Cassaw 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, the city is still waiting on the bonding bill passage to be passed so they can proceed with the project, which is still likely to be at least two to three weeks away. Once the city receives passage of the bonding bill, they'll host a special meeting to approve bidding of the project, and then that'll go into the bidding cycle, which means bids will likely not be open until mid to late June. Following bid opening, it requires USDA R&amp;D approval, which could take up to one to two months. So the city's really losing the majority of the 2023 construction season. They'll be lucky to have two to three months left. They're beginning to prepare and plan for that accordingly. The lion's share of the work will have to happen in 2024. And unfortunately, it's looking like the work on Cassaw 10, east of Highway 22, which we want to done in 2023, is not going to be able to happen. So there's going to be some turmoil in District 4, Commissioner, with, with traffic issues while they're reconstructing that segment of Penn and while we're working on our piece of 13. So we've tried to avoid that, but unfortunately, the stars just not aligned in our favor. We'll continue to try to mitigate that to the best of our abilities. We are going to be setting up a meeting with the city's consultant engineer to discuss how we schedule those projects. Maintenance activity updates, we did provide a map in the county board packet with just showing you around the county, where we'll be doing different activities. So we have several locations where we'll be doing rip rap and pipe replacements that are noted in the purple circles. And then our chip seals are broken out by the type of stone and/or whether or not they'll be fog sealed. So on our very, very busy roads, we prefer to use fault stone, which is a very durable limestone. It's, it's more angular. We get that out of Iowa, actually. And on our very, very busy roads, we actually fog seal over the top of that because it kind of glues the rock down even better and provides better visibility for the striping. And then our moderate traffic level roads, we will just utilize the fault stone without the fog seal, so without the second layer of asphalt over the top. And then our lower traffic volume roads, we utilize P-rock, so you can see those in the lighter blue lines shown on the county map. And as you look at that, there are 41 total miles of seal coat being performed this year or planned this year. And we will also be mowing out in entirety the central two third, the central third of the county, as shown between the two green lines. Do you have to answer any questions on that, if there are any? Hearing none, I'll move on. An additional item that I brought up for discussion was the IIJA Federal Infrastructure Bill, Carbon Reduction Grant application, project candidates. The project applications are due on May 19th and include a variety of different, um, different modes that carbon could theoretically be reduced according to the grant. As we started to look at those different projects that would be eligible, we decided to try to apply for replacement of two timber pedestrian bridges on the Red Jacket Trail. Bridges R0410 and R0411 are both old timber bridges that are in very poor condition. They're on both sides of County Road 33, if you're on the trail. And we're going to apply, that would be 80% federal funding for replacement of those two bridges. We're going to take a shot at that. And then additionally, the District 7 County Engineers, 13 counties, are working on considering developing and submitting a joint application to lease and, um, obtain charging stations, so lease 13 F-150 Lightnings or other EV pickups and charging stations and just to get each county to then get one EV pickup to utilize under this grant, but we would all apply together for it. So it's, it's an interesting approach. There's some requirements in IIJA that require Buy America, and they tell you EVs are eligible for these funds, but when you look at EVs, they aren't American-made when it comes to the minerals and the metals that are in batteries. So you can't buy the vehicles with it, you can lease them. So maybe that's all right with an EV, especially trialling on for the first three to five years. So we're, we're working through the details on that and we're, we're hoping to submit an application for that. Again, they're due May 19th, so we're, we're in the middle of it.
That's, that's an interesting concept, but there isn't a pickup made that's made completely in the United States.
Correct.
I mean, you can, you can come out and say, well, it's because of the battery, but the thing is.
The assembly and everything else.
The assembly, the, the, there's parts in any vehicle.
Yep. Yep.
That, you know.
Are not made here.
There's parts, Toyota actually makes a lot of their parts right here in the United States, but they're not in.
A lot of the, the language in the IIJA Buy America conflicts with this grant program.
Oh, my gosh.
And you're getting different messages, so we're trying to kind of weed through it.
Yeah, how can you buy America when there's not an America-made vehicle out there, period?
Yeah, well, we've seen that in other folks that have applied for these funds through the MAPO as well, and they've run into the same hurdle. And the problem is the automakers don't know, I don't think they've got the competence yet to lease a vehicle for three to five years and then take it back, in all honesty. That's from the conversations we've had.
I get it.
So. All right.
Good information.
Last item for discussion is the Rapid and Dam Memorandum. This is relatively brief. It's been fortunately fairly quiet on the Rapid and Dam front. On April sixth, we submitted the revised emergency action plan. That's an annual requirement, and it effectively just updated contact information within the AP. It was accepted by the FERC and it has been distributed to staff. On April thirteenth, the FERC notified the county of their condition assessment rating for the dam. The National Inventory of Dams, the NID, condition assessment rating for the dam is poor based on the NID definitions. No subsequent follow-up was requested or provided, so we left that one as is. And then last but not least, on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the exemptions render application was submitted to the FERC and was subsequently accepted. I've heard nothing else on that yet. So the ball is in motion. It's really in their court at this point. And again, with item four, we appear to be on schedule of what we planned previously and discussed previously. However, at this point, again, this is all, at this point in time, in FERC's discretion and look forward. That concludes my report.
Thanks for all your work on that, too, because it's a lot of time consumption on one project with the dam. And I know you and your staff spent a lot of time on working with the FERC and working with the different stuff, so thank you for that.
It's very challenging. They didn't, I didn't get that, that equation in college to learn how to do with hydroelectric dam.
Dams don't come up very often.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions from public comment or anything else if you'd like.
Thank you for inviting us to the safety meeting the other day. I think we all had a good time walking around with the shop. Appreciate that.
Walking around that shop was eye-opening.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. All right, Mr. McDermott, will we have you up?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you.
Morning, Pat.
Morning, Pat. You'll see some of the numbers are up in some areas. Child protection numbers are up again in the determination of parental rights. One thing that I would like to point out, you know, coming out of COVID and whatnot, the school districts are more about making sure that the kids are back in school and their butts in the seat, so to speak, is what I've been told. And with that, knowing that, I knew that our truancy numbers were going to go up, which affects not only our office, as of yesterday, there was a hundred that I was sitting here just looking at emails, and there's a couple more that are coming. So we're going to have another spike in truancy petitions, which will increase the workload for community corrections as well. But again, it's a worthwhile cause. In the great scheme of things, as a reminder, if we keep, excuse me, if we keep one kid in school versus a high school dropout, they'll make over a million dollars more in their lifetime. So that's definitely a benefit. If anybody has any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know, otherwise I don't have much to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, and we'll go to our administration. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for April eighteenth.
I'll move the call.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bell.
Second?
I got a motion and a second on the bills for the two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number seven in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. As you saw today, we have a lot of new employees, and so this agenda actually reflects some of the activity in our HR department. I think this is the first time I've seen a two-page HR agenda with all filling positions. I don't believe there's any resignations here, so that's encouraging. But I'll run through the positions that have been filled, including a clerical specialist. This is a temporary part-time position in the Sheriff's Department to help process some of the conceal and carry permit processing. Then we filled a number of positions. The landfill is a part of the county's takeover of that operation, so those are listed in Items B through F, and you see the various positions there. And then a little further down, Item G is filling a position in the library, a part-time librarian. Item H is filling a on-call library clerk, as is Item I. So we filled a number of positions in the library. Then we filled a nine-one-one telecommunicator position in our sheriff's office, as well as a correctional officer in the jail, and also filled a senior count clerk in our finance and license center division. And lastly, filled the emergency management director position. This is a new position budget in the sheriff's department. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of these filling of positions. All right. Item number eight in your packet then is the first quarter donations, so asking the board to accept those donations. Just running through them real quick, we continue to see a fair amount of activity in terms of donations to our library, but we also did receive a couple of donations to our clubhouse in our human services department. And then a couple of fairly large donations to the sheriff's department for both a canine purchase at some point in the future and dive equipment. So moving on then, we did receive some funding for the library in terms of capital from the Mankato Area Foundation. And then lastly, a small donation to our Veterans Ban Capital Fund. Terms of in-kind donations then, you'll see a number of different donations again to the library, as well as volunteer time given to the library. So at this time, I would ask the county board if they were willing to make a motion to accept these donations.
I'll move it.
You got a motion and a second to accept the donations. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Let's see here. So we will go to our discussion of what we've been doing for the last two weeks. Mark, you want to start it out?
I don't know, it's not a lot. And one, one committee had canceled because they didn't get a quorum. I was available, but. Anyway, then really just had the Highway Department Annual Safety Meeting. That went really well. And, yeah, moving right along.
Okay. My report is relatively short, too, Mr. Chair. I had a few SECB meetings and committee meetings online, a lot of things going on there. And then just several things with our VRBO over the weekend, a lot of activity there. Of course, the phone calls and ongoing issues with the compost site. And then the safety meeting, which I thought was very informative as we go out and talk with some of the staff out there. So looking forward to the open house tonight for the Highway Show.
Since our April eighteenth board meeting, I also participated in the Public Works Safety. On April twenty-second, I participated in ISG's Lake Conference. They had over eighty people from all over southern Minnesota, as we talked about working together on that. April twenty-fourth was our NACO AG policy meeting. And then on April twenty-eighth was the La Sura River One Watershed One Plan. We approved as a policy committee to submit that plan to Bowser. So we now start a thirty-day final review by the state agencies. After that thirty-day period, we'll go before the Bowser Board and we'll be ready to get started as we look at implementation. Our policy committee, as a collaboration, went through our bylaws and some of the operating procedures, or at a final draft stage of those, and those have been or will be submitted to all the county attorneys, administrators of the four counties for their review. So that concludes, I guess, MFS. River Hills appreciated Ryan helping out on some of the concerns there with some erosion and road issues, but primarily been MFS and Public Works. So that completes my report.
Thank you.
Patty?
Okay, I, too, have experienced MFS, and I went to attend the AMC board meeting on April twenty-first, just because I was there. I had a SHAF meeting on the twenty-seventh and a general safety meeting, which was amazing how important that building is.
Need a new one.
Yeah, like a long time ago.
Great. Well, for myself, after the last board meeting, I had a Highway one sixty-nine corridor annual spring board meeting. It was held up in Shakopee. And I had a TDS on Thursday, the twentieth, and a NACO rack meeting in the afternoon. Friday, we had our AMC board meeting. And let's see, I had a finance budget meeting on Monday, the twenty-fourth, for TDS. We have a NACO Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting on the twenty-fifth. And, oh, myself and my wife read to the children at the library on the twenty-seventh. Nice. So that, except for yesterday, we had another budget meeting for TDS yesterday morning, for TDS. Just trying to get, the next meeting's going to be when I'm gone, so they're not going to have me there, I suppose, on the fifteenth. Other than that, this afternoon, I have a NACO membership meeting, and of course, our Public Works meeting this evening. And that's the end. And unless anybody has anything else.
Move to recess.
Move to recess.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes. All right, thank you.